Good evening. My name is Diane Proctor. I’m the president of the League and I want to thank you all for coming this evening to the League of Women Voters of Concord and Carlisle’s forum on making direct democracy thrive. Before we begin, there are some people I wish to thank for making this event possible. Nancy Brown, the chairman of our communications committee, who has done a Herculean job with both she and her committee. And Hayden, our membership chair. Nancy Bugus, our events committee head. Julie Rowing for setting up the sound system, which is working. Thank you, Julie. And Peggy Wardelen, who is taping all of this. Thank you, Peggy, so much. And Mr. Ross Bruce, who’s over here doing this, taping the event for the Concord-Carlisle High School radio station. So, thank you. Ned Perry, one of our distinguished panelists this evening, was quoted saying, “One of the special points about town life is that we have so much input in the way our government behaves. I hope more people will become involved.” It is indeed in the spirit of that comment that the League has asked these four distinguished panelists to join us this evening to explore the future of Concord and Carlisle’s cherished tradition, the town meeting. Ned Perry served as Concord’s town moderator from 2000 to 2009, a period he graciously refers to as ancient history. Eric Van Loon followed Ned, serving for six years from 2010 to 2015. And today Carmen Reese, the first woman town moderator in Concord’s history, was elected in the spring of 2016 and is our present moderator. Wayne Davis, who I’ve come to know and enjoy through this process, was elected by the citizens of Carlisle in 2009 and now serves today as the town moderator of Carlisle. A brief background. Officially, what is the role of the town moderator? The town moderator is elected yearly by the voters to coordinate, make key decisions, and preside over the town meeting process. That is a very broad mandate. In other words, these leaders manage our town’s legislative process. No small task. We have asked them to address briefly four topics. Ned will begin by addressing the history of town meeting, which he’s already begun by putting out these fabulous pictures. And if you haven’t had a chance to look at them, they’re just amazing and provide us a very rich visual history of the town meetings here in Concord. Eric will explain the way a town meeting is organized, how it comes together. Carmen will focus on the strengths and perhaps vulnerabilities of this process. And Wayne, the future form, the future of this form of government. After they speak, I will pose some questions members of the League have sent to me, and we shall then open the meeting to your questions. So, I turn now to our moderators.
Thank you, Diane. I’ve been asked to do a little history and I’ve asked to be, have it brief. And so, I’m going to discuss town meeting in its broadest form, from the Vikings to today.[220.54][220.54](Laughter). I’ve also been asked to mention that I’m such a town meeting junkie that once I took a date from New York State to our town meeting, it was in the Armory, and she had to sit up on the stage because the moderator was off on the right-hand side. The Armory, the town meeting in Concord used to be in the Concord Armory for many, many years. The overflow was at Emerson High School at the time. I can remember being in the overflow at Emerson High School, and I can also remember Libby Hall. And I believe this is Libby Hall along with the town clerk who has a feather in her cap recording the votes. And so, I thought it’d be fun to have some of these pictures. So, the Vikings started invading England in the 14, 1500s, and they brought down the concept of running their communities by the men getting together and talking. And everybody had a chance to be heard. And then, they would vote and they would take, and the decision of that meeting would be by majority vote, and the community would be run based upon that decision. And whether it be what village they were going to raid or where they were going to farm, it was done that way. The men would gather, they would all be heard, anybody could speak that wanted to speak. And then, they would take a vote and a majority vote would happen. So, that became, once the Vikings started settling England, or what is now England, that became sort of the way the villages of England were run. They mixed in some royalty and they mixed in other layers of national government. But when the colonists arrived in Plymouth, they actually, the men on the ship gathered before they landed and decided what they were going to do when they went on the shore and took a vote, and then they followed that. So, they brought what they knew of the governance in England to New England. And that was how the communities in New England were governed. It was sort of tumultuous. The men would gather. In the early days, the men had to attend or they were fined. And so, that went on from November 9th, 2016-20 to when the Massachusetts Constitution was gone into effect. And remarkably, it was two days ago, 237 years. I’m sure you all knew that.[391.12][391.12](Laughter). So, it went into effect on October 25th, 1780. And in that constitution, it is written, town government, town meeting is written, legitimized by the sentence, “The people have a right in an orderly and peaceful manner to assemble and to consult upon the common good and give instruction to their representatives.” And from that, town meeting has developed over the years. There have been two very important changes since 1780. Women were allowed to and encouraged to come and participate, which made a town meeting the whole community rather than just the men. And the finance committee was appointed, and I’m sure we’ll hear about the finance committee later on. But the finance committee was appointed to look over on behalf of the town meeting the finances of the community, all the financial issues. And other committees followed the finance committee. And as a state legislature is apt to do, the state legislature has given anybody they can delegate responsibilities to, they’ve given a lot of committees of our towns responsibilities without funding them, like the NRC. The Board of Selectmen is said to be some of the most governed public servants in the Commonwealth by statute. And so, they can’t take steps without making sure that they do it within the legislative prerogatives that the Commonwealth has put on top of them. So, that’s where we are today. We have committees within the town meeting. The women are obviously leading now the town meeting. Thank goodness they’re leading here in Concord. Some of us have been anxious to have them meet, and there she is. And I’ll turn over how town meeting is organized now to Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ned. Well, Ned went back to the Vikings and up to the present day, which is a pretty wide sweep. I’m going to be doing about eight months of how we get ready for town meeting in contrast. And one of my friends once said that it looks like presiding over town meeting is like presiding over a three-ring, unscripted circus. And I think that with Ringling Brothers having gone under, we can safely say now that town meeting is the greatest show on earth.[547.29][547.29](Laughter). And I wanted to talk briefly about how it is that it’s organized. And there are really, I’m going to put it into six steps that comes about before that first gavel comes down on the first night. And that is first defining the agenda for town meeting. Secondly, figuring out the order of the agenda. Third, learning substance about the agenda items. Four, refining the agenda. Five is getting out more information on the home stretch. And then, six is the final preparation. So, what do each of these steps entail? The first, in terms of defining the agenda, really starts out seven or eight months before town meeting, when the select board communicates to the chairs of all the committees that it’s time to start thinking about what matters they might want to bring to town meeting, eight months hence. Usually, obviously, here in Concord, we’re usually in April. And then, a letter goes out later in the fall, and everyone is invited to a town meeting preview meeting, which usually takes place the first Saturday in December. And each committee in town comes and presents to the select board and to the finance committee, who are also in attendance, but those things which they think they would want to have as part of the agenda for the coming year. And citizens who might be interested in doing a citizen’s petition, if the town clerk or select board members have heard wind of that, also encourages the citizens to come. And then, from that day, the select board says that the warrant, which is the other name for the, the official name for the agenda, the warrant is open for a period of 30 days for citizens or anybody else to put items in to be on the agenda or the warrant. So, that’s step one, is figuring out what is going to be on the agenda. Step two, and that’s a broad public thing. Step two is much more narrow, and that’s taking the typically 50 to 60 items that we have in Concord and figuring out what the order of those ought to be. And that is the job of and the prerogative of the select board, usually done in at least a discussion with the moderator. But thinking about all sorts of things about are there subject matters that ought to be grouped? Are there some particularly interesting items that ought to be put at the very end in order to entice people to stay through multiple nights and stay to the very end? Thinking through those kinds of questions. So, that’s step two, the ordering of the agenda on the warrant. Step three is the first broad public education about the warrant items. And Ned will correct me if I’m wrong here. I believe that Concord is actually the only town in Massachusetts that has five public hearings on the warrant articles. The finance committee conducts three. One night on town budget matters, one night on school and school-related matters. The planning board conducts a third night on anything that’s a zoning article. And the third finance committee hearing is on enterprise funds such as the light plant and the water and sewer and BD Center, things of that nature. And then, the fifth one is the select board on anything that doesn’t fit in one of those prior categories and/or broader issues of public policy. So, those are open to everyone. They are televised. It’s an opportunity for the presenters to come and to talk about what it is that they’re proposing and for other people to ask questions or express views that there’s some real flaws in whatever is being proposed. But that is the public, the first broad public education, step three. Step four, I’ve characterized as refining the agenda. And that takes a number of different forms. One is that the exact wording for the motions to be presented at town meeting gets resolved. The moderator in Concord comes to every one of the five hearings, takes notes, and begins to try to think about which of these items are either totally administrative or they’re corrections to the wording of something the previous year or they’re completely non-controversial. And the moderator develops what’s called the consent calendar. And typically, 25 to 30 of those 60 items might be on the, put, proposed by the moderator to go on the consent calendar. The other thing that the moderator listens for is are there some items that are at the opposite end of the spectrum? Some items that are hot-button items, there’s deep division, there’s lots of letters in the newspaper and things of that nature. And so, the moderator has the ability and authority to designate something as an item of high interest, high public interest, and if she or he wishes, schedule that at a particular time. So, if there’s a lot of people that are interested in something and they can’t get babysitters for three nights or can’t get out in the evening for three nights, they may know that Tuesday night at 8:00 PM is going to be item X, such as a water bottle ban, for example. So, that they can know which of those nights and what time precisely it would be to come. So, those refinements, that’s step four of refining the agenda. Step five is down the home stretch, broader information, all of the motions get posted on the town website. Further explanations appear in the Concord Journal and in other forums and through other media. But a broader education about the issues and a lot of times, how the specific motion that’s going to be offered under a broad agenda topic is really much narrower than that topic or might be sort of off to one end of it. So, a lot of refinement and changes come, and that it’s important to share that information. And then, the final thing is the final refinements. There are a series of meetings, most of which are not for the public at large. The moderator, the chair, the select board, the treasurer, sit down with town council and go line by line through every single item to make sure that the wording is correct and the reference to the mass general statutes is accurate and things of that nature. A second meeting occurs with the fire chief, with the police chief, and town staff on all sorts of logistics and plans. You may recall one of our town meetings special about a year and a half ago, huge snowstorm that night and the decision, how do you consult with the police and fire and make a decision of whether to go. And last, a meeting at which all the speakers who are going to come and present meet with the moderator, and everyone is assigned time limits for their speeches and their presentations. So, all six of those things happen before, bang, the gavel comes down at 7:01 on the first night of town meeting.
Good evening, everybody. I’ve been asked to talk about the strengths and challenges of town meeting as a form of government. Putting aside the Vikings, as far back as the Federalist Papers in 1788, New England Town Meeting has been cited as the outstanding example of pure democracy. That is, all eligible voters are allowed a voice in the town’s policy decision through town meeting. So, let’s ask, is that a good thing? If we measure the quality of a form of government by the opportunity it affords for self-determination, open meeting, open town meeting scores high indeed. If we measure quality by responsiveness to citizens, nothing beats open town meeting. If we consider partisanship as a negative to the legislative process, then the absence of partisanship from open town meeting makes it a superior form of government. Using efficiency as our yardstick, open town meeting may not measure out quite so well.[1190.58][1190.58](Laughter). If we judge our form of government by the level of research, analysis, and thoughtfulness that underlie the decisions it makes and the laws it adopts, then the score we assign to open town meeting very much depends on the level of preparation and thoughtfulness brought by the participants. Consider the qualifications for a member of representative town meeting that were listed by a gentleman named Robert Tilden in his article on New England Town Government back in 1958. He says that the representative for a representative town meeting must know town, know the town and understand the town’s government. He must dedicate time and effort to study the issues that will be before town meeting. He must conduct investigations as necessary. He must read reports and research done on all the issues before town meeting. He must attend all the hearings on all the issues. He must provide thoughtful judgment, and he must weigh the issues and the arguments in terms of the common good. So, that’s what we expect of someone who’s a representative at a representative town government. So then, if citizens at an open town meeting are educated on their government and their town, if they dedicate time and energy to study the issues, if they attend or watch the hearings, and if they employ thoughtful judgment with the common good in mind, then we can expect very wise decisions from town meeting. If not, then town meeting can be an illustration of the garbage-in, garbage-out principle. Mr. Tilden offers that from its first settlement, New Englanders have agreed in the opinion that the best form of government is the one which provides the least government, that is the least distance between the citizens themselves and the rules that govern them. He goes on to note that with only a few exceptions, this view of New Englanders has resulted in government by amateurs. If we believe that long careers in politics do not necessarily make for good legislators, then government by amateurs may be just fine. The last of Mr. Tilden’s observations that I want to share with you is that unlike our state and national legislatures, which emerged fully codified from constitutional conventions, town meeting really hasn’t been systematically codified as a legislative body, and it’s still in the process of development. Town meeting is a dynamic thing, and change is a characteristic of a dynamic thing. And we can perhaps count this as one of the benefits of an open town meeting form of government. We are able to adapt it to respond to changes in our society and our needs. I want to close by noting the interesting fact that according to the National League of Cities, only about 5% of local communities nationwide employ an open town meeting form of government. Less than 1% employ a representative town meeting. So, why is that? Are the other available forms of local government, council manager, mayor council, commission, are they actually better forms? If so, how? Or is open town meeting just too burdensome for most places? Are there too few interested and committed enough citizens to make it work? And if this last is the reason, then are we at risk here of this coming to pass? I want to thank the League of Women Voters for yet another public forum to encourage us to think about and participate in our government, and it’s a pleasure to be here.
So, Carmen, I think I agree with everything you had to say, but this rap on the efficiency of town meeting, you know, I’m thinking Mitch McConnell might beg to disagree and would actually be quite jealous of the ability of town meeting as a legislative body to actually get things done.[1476.13][1476.13](Laughter).
Fair enough.
Fair enough, okay. And what I most agree with you about is on thanking the League, Diane, for pulling this together, for pulling all of us together, and for everything that the League does in both of our communities. It really is an important part of what we do. I know Concord is more of a cradle of democracy perhaps than Carlisle, but I feel like I’m really at the center of things here. And town meeting is part of democracy, and groups like the League are also just critical, critical players. I’m going to cover two topics. One, fairly briefly, and then that would be some differences between the Concord and Carlisle town meetings, a little bit of compare and contrast we thought might be of interest to people. And then, spend the rest of my time really talking about what the future of town meeting might be. I’ll be throwing out a bunch of different things and without going into too much detail, but I hope we’ll be able to dig into at least some of them that may be of whatever interest to you as you raise questions afterwards. On the differences, there are lots of really small differences, but only a few that are more noteworthy. The one that is most important, at least to Carlilians, and the one for which I know all of my fellow citizens are most grateful, is our meetings are always shorter.[1581.96][1581.96](Laughter). In my 20-plus years, we get done in one night about two-thirds of the time, and the other third of the time, we may need to go into a second session. And that’s not because we’re better or smarter or anything like that. It’s just we’re smaller and we don’t have the various enterprise things, municipal light plant and water and sewer and so forth. So, there are actually some pretty good reasons. Perhaps a bigger difference stylistically, the two town meetings, as I’ve watched yours and looked at ours, they’re actually fairly similar, you know, the populations are similar. One big cultural difference is in citizen’s petitions. Concord has more of them, they’re more frequent, and the subject matter, they may be sort of the mundane things of town government, you know, the zoning adjustments and that type of thing that someone wants to put forward. But Concord, as we know, has this tradition of sometimes tackling the larger issues of global import. And in Carlisle, that just doesn’t seem to happen much. I’ve got some speculation as to why that is. It’s not a better or worse, I just, it is one noticeable difference. The closing of the warrant, so this upfront process that Eric mentioned, Carlisle doesn’t close its warrant until about three or four weeks before the town meeting. And so, I suspect that that has some important differences in the couple of months ahead. But we can explore that if anyone is interested. And then, another big difference is, as Eric mentioned, these public hearings that Concord has, which we believe are probably unique in the Commonwealth. In Carlisle, most of the warrant articles have come up through the boards and committees, so there will have been publicly noticed hearings or formal meetings about them in the run-up to town meeting, but there is not this town meeting public hearing per se. What Carlisle has, which is not a part of town government but is an incredible asset, is the mosquito, which is not our insect but our town newspaper, which is a nonprofit, wholly staffed by volunteers, fellow citizens. And the coverage that we have of town government is the envy, I believe, of every other town in the Commonwealth. Certainly, when I go to moderators’ meetings and hear other moderators carp about the inability to educate people about what’s coming up, we don’t have that problem. Every household gets the mosquito and they can see the issues developing in the months before town meeting occurs. So, even though we don’t have the public hearings, there is another mechanism that is pretty good, far from perfect, but really very good for educating the public. So, those are some of the differences. Future of town meeting. And in particular, I want to focus on really And in particular, I want to focus on really what are we concerned about? This institution, 237 years old officially and with antecedents going a hundred, couple hundred years before that, the question really, to my mind, is how can we ensure the future relevancy for another couple of hundred years? By improving the structure and opportunities for citizen engagement in the town meeting process. And I believe, as I think as inherently you've already heard, we view town meeting as not just those days in April and May when we sit down and get together, it is really the full, the legislative process takes months and months, and town meeting is really just the culmination of this long process. And most of the best opportunities for citizen engagement happen before you get to the floor of town meeting. It is much, much easier to persuade, to influence the outcome of something if you've been involved at the board or committee level in the months preceding. So what are some ways, and again, that's enormous and awesome citizen participation opportunity, what are some ways it could be made better? There are all sorts of discussions going on now all around the country about how to improve citizen engagement in the governing process, and there's talk of using various online tools and so forth. Actually, you've got a good example of that going on in Concord right now with the Envision Concord process, which if you haven't heard, is started, I believe, earlier this year over the summer, collecting ideas, it's basically a community planning process, collecting ideas via web portal and the opportunities for people to discuss ideas with each other. And now the next stage is a survey has just been released and people have the opportunity to log in and express their preferences around different choices that have been posed. There are a proliferation of similar types of tools. If you just Google "citizen engagement platform," you can spot them all over the place. Austin, Texas has something called Speak Up Austin, Calgary, Canada has something. Most of these things are being done by larger cities, not ones that have the relative size and limitations of infrastructure of Concord and Carlisle, but there are, there clearly are opportunities, and this is really focused on the front end, before the policy proposals are actually refined and even get onto the warrant or get moved from the warrant to the motion stage. Next, other technology things worth mentioning, CCTV. We have, for both communities, is a great asset, being able to tape or live broadcast various board and committee meetings and so forth. Of course, those make for incredibly cinsulane-gating entertainment. So I'm not sure how many people watch them, but still, it's important to have this stuff out there, because not everyone can get out and attend the meetings and so forth, so it is actually incredibly important. But there are other things that are being done in other communities in the Commonwealth, so in some you have kind of a roundtable with the, say, the moderator or town manager or administrator and chair of the Board of Selectmen, chair of the FinCom, talking about the different articles that are coming up, so there are different sorts of formats, and that's certainly something that I'm looking into to see what we can do in Carlisle around that. Obviously, the websites that each town has for getting material out in advance, we both have them, they're both, let us say, stuck in the 20th century in terms of how much material is available and the ease of access and so forth. Again, I think there are probably constraints on getting things as slick as your Amazon buying experience, but still, I think that's an important thing that we need to keep pushing on. Going to an area where there isn't much to date, but looking ahead to the future, I would like to see more opportunity for online discussion forums. So this is subs, this is not, this is different from the Envision Concord sort of thing where people are open-ended discussion of a broad issue like, you know, what do we think the future of this town should be, or what should we do about immigration? But instead, actual discussion forums around the particular warrant articles. There is one town in the Commonwealth, I'm not quite sure how they manage it, but they actually have a Facebook page, and they post things and citizens are encouraged to discuss things on the Facebook page. That doesn't quite thrill me because Facebook is way unstructured, you don't know what's really going on, but there would be an opportunity, I think, to put something together that would have a little bit more structure. You could have moderated discussions or unmoderated, if they are moderated, moderated by whom? By the town moderator, by someone other than the town moderator? All sorts of different questions, but I think there's a real opportunity to have some interchange and get people engaged and debating the issues before you even get to the floor of town In terms of what can be done differently, actually, and now I'm finally going to get to at-town meeting, again, technology offers some real opportunities. One thing that can be done is to use electronic voting, there's been, an increasing number of towns in the Commonwealth are now using that. It's just a great way to streamline the counting process. In Carlisle, there's some mixed feelings about it. The first time I brought it up and said, you know, I want town meeting to go more quickly, one of the reactions I got was, yeah, but while we're waiting for the counted vote to be done, that's the time to socialize with our neighbors, don't take that away from us. So there are competing considerations there. More opportunity to broaden the broadcasting by television. In Carlisle, for various reasons, we can't live broadcast the town meeting, however, I'm in discussions with CCTV right now of instead of broadcasting over their network, instead, could we take their video feed and put it over the internet to so livestream, so you have to do it over a computer connection as opposed to through your television. Other communities are experimenting with the possibility of remote questions. So in other words, if you're not at the meeting, the, they take speakers from the floor posing questions and debating and so forth, if you're not actually there, you can put a question in and the moderator may, if he chooses, take it. And the final thing is to, is to sort of combine the TV and the remote questions by potentially looking at the possibility of remote voting, and there's some discussion, probably requires a change in state law, that might allow people to vote even if they've not come to the town meeting. You'd have to be some sort of verification that you were actually watching the proceedings on your computer or on television before you're allowed to vote, but those are just some of the ideas that have been put out there, and if we can begin to take advantage of a couple of those, I think we can ensure the continued relevancy of town meeting. Thank you.
You can see, I think, quite clearly why these four people who are leaders in their communities, their leadership is so...
Deeply impressive. This is on, yes, no, maybe? Thank you so much. We have now an opportunity for lots of questions. The League sent about 24 questions. Wayne wisely said to me, you're not going to ask all 24, are you? I said, no. But I am going to start by asking a few of the questions that were sent to me ahead of time, and then we'll open it up for everybody else. If you're the legislative body of our towns, who's the executive? Anybody, you can take one.
Well, in our form of government, that would be the Select Board with working with the, in Concord, it's a strong town manager form of government.
And Wayne, is that the same in Carlisle?
It is the same in the sense that the Board of Selectmen have the executive power, but we have a town administrator, which is a somewhat weaker, not the individual, but just the way the role is structured, a little bit weaker and a little bit different than a manager, but essentially the same.
Okay. Given the demands of modern life, in terms of all of the expectations, Mr. Tilden's expectations that you've suggested for us, Carmen, cause us to wonder, is this process too demanding for the citizens of a town? And in that sense, is the town meeting, as much as we cherish it, outdated?
I don't think so. You know, I think that we have, in general, a high level of discourse at town meeting. And I think that there is pretty good attendance at our hearings, not as wonderful as we'd like it to be, but based on the questionnaires that we received after, the returns to questionnaires that we received after town meeting this last year, many, many, many people are watching the hearings on television who are, or online, who are not actually attending the hearings, so that's a good thing. And we have a lot of citizen engagement and involvement. I think the only issue is we may not have quite enough, it would be good if we had more.
If we had more.
I think that there's sort of two dimensions of that. One is how broadly the citizens are involved, and then the other is, of those who are involved, how deeply involved and knowledgeable are they? And I think with regard to that latter group, it truly is remarkable here in Concord, all the involvement of the members of the 35 or 40 town committees, the others who are maybe not an official committee member, but who monitor what's going on in the committees, who come and get involved, and most of the time, I would venture to say that the discussion at town meeting may exceed in quality the discussion in the United States Congress, where you have full-time people paid to be on top of issues, but may not in fact really have looked at things in, as much in-depth and thought about it. But that other dimension, we could always, I think, want and do everything we can to promote more involvement. I think it's worth reflecting that the exact same issue is really staring us in the face as a nation of how many people bother to come out and just cast a vote on Election Day, even for the president. And, you know, that does not take a lot of time and homework and in-depth research or reading at night, people are pretty much inundated with information, but fewer and fewer people are making the effort even to do that in one day.
Well, you know, it is humiliating to hear in the news, a country where they've just in fact achieved democracy, and they get 89, 90% of the population not only voting but dying to vote, and then we get a paucity of people often attending and voting, and that's really, it's alarming and it's concerning. Thank you. Tip O'Neill famously said, or at least he is given credit for having famously said that all politics is local. How can we, not just the League, but we citizens, help to forward the kind of detailed knowledge and discourse that Mr. Tilden has asked that all representatives embrace before they attend a town meeting?
Well, I'll take a shot at that. I think there are really two ways. The obvious way, which we've just been talking about, is actually taking the time to inform oneself about the issues. And, you know, we talked about there are lots of ways to get that information, something we haven't talked about, though for me, it's just as important a part of town meeting functioning as a democracy is, let me call it straight out, political activism, political organizing before you get into the meeting hall. Part of what democracy is about is rounding up your fellow citizens and saying, don't you care about this issue? Don't you understand how important it is? You need to come out and vote and you need to support this. And so part of it, I believe, is actually getting out and rabble-rousing and educating your friends and neighbors as to what's going on. And, you know, for me, the prior question about, you know, is it too demanding, you have to ask compared to what? And you only need to talk to someone who has had to fight City Hall about, okay, so what do we do to put pressure on our elected officials? What you need to do for that is, you know, yes, it's lots of political organizing and trying to influence and so forth, but at the end of the day, you're trying to twist the arms of some elected officials whose number one concern is how do I get reelected? Versus trying to persuade your friends and neighbors about really what is best for our community. And I would challenge people, which type of conversation would you rather be having? And which actually gives you more control over your destiny?
That is a gorgeous answer. Thank you. Under state law, oh, yeah, go.
Give a plug for our host organization here. I understand your numbers are up this year, for good reason, I hope they will continue to grow. Eric didn't mention it as one of the five activities leading up, but there is actually a sixth, which I found enormously helpful when I was moderator, and that was a meeting with, I think it was open to the whole League, but it may have been the Executive Committee of the League. It was one or two sessions, depending upon how big the warrant was and how astute the moderator was at moving through issues. And the League was informed, they challenged, they asked questions, and I encourage all of you to get your friends to join the League, because it is a great forum here in Concord and across the Commonwealth and probably throughout the US. But certainly in Concord, the League is one of the best educational forums that we have, and I applaud this session, I know you're going to have other sessions throughout the year, but please bring particularly new people to the Concord community and indoctrinate them into how we run Concord, because it is volunteer-driven, volunteer-run, and that's what keeps Concord great, and it is also what keeps Carlisle great. I know I've sat through some similar sessions with the moderator from Carlisle and the Executive Committee of the League, but thank you, League, for what you do and keep it up.
Thank you, thank you. State law is, governs whether people have to be present. It reads, under state law, attendance must be in person, and this is the last chair's question. No absentee voting is permitted in Massachusetts town meetings. If we wanted to do the kinds of things you're talking about, Wayne, in terms of remote voting, using television and other devices for enlarging the audience and making it easier for people to participate, is it a requirement that we start by getting that law changed? And how would we go about it?
Well, first I should be clear, I wasn't necessarily advocating for that, I was mentioning it as, as an idea that recently came to my attention, and there are some people who are working on it, and I think that there are, first, there are a lot of practical challenges that I would want to think through before I reach the conclusion that it was a good idea. However, if whether I or anyone else comes to that conclusion, you know, if they do and they want to make it happen, they would need to start by getting the state law changed. Though the people who floated this idea to me, I suggested that before they start talking to the state legislature, they might talk to the Massachusetts Moderators Association, of which we're all proud members, to make sure that the people who the legislature just might listen to about how town meeting works were also on board with the idea before they started, tried to get a law passed.
Prudent, prudent political advice. Eric.
I would add a couple thoughts to what has just been said by Wayne, which I agree with. One is that there are fascinating advanced technologies. I was approached by a Concord citizen who was a, or a Concord resident, who was a citizen, I believe it was, of Belgium, and explained that they voted remotely by computer in all the local elections back home. They had like an ID and a password and things of that nature, and did, were able to vote, and they believed, without voter fraud. I'm told, secondly, that there is a technology in place, going to one of Carmen's earlier thoughts, that could prevent, even if you had a voter ID and a password and all that, you could be blocked from voting unless your technology showed that you were, not necessarily listening to town meeting, but at least town meeting was on your TV or on your laptop, was broadcasting, and the technology apparently exists to make sure that that happens. I want to echo what Wayne said. I'm not advocating this. I think there's a lot of real things to think about here. But A, the technology is there, and B, going to this other question that we kept talking about, about the breadth of involvement and engagement, you can look around this room and the age quartile of this body is very...
Careful, Eric.
No, it really is very similar to most of, the majority of, the participants in town meeting. And the blunt truth is that our kids and/or grandkids, the millennials, they do operate in a different world. They do everything on their laptops, and they're used to participating in things remotely. And they've gone through college where in the lecture series, they sat there and, you know, they could click answers to the professor's questions. And they just have a very different mindset, and for a lot of them, it almost feels that it's a conscious exclusion of sort of our generation, the less tech-sad, when they would say, "We can sit there, we can listen," or, as in election, "I know who I'm going to vote for, I know how I want to vote on this issue or that issue." And I think that there is a strong argument that if that were allowed and refined and put in operation, that more people would participate than are able to arrange their affairs so they can come to the high school for three nights in a row.
Thank you. Let's open it now to questions. If people would step up to this microphone, kind of one at a time, please step up to the microphone, sir, and we'll go from there.
Ross Robb, Monument Street. About a year ago, before Tony retires as the Concord CFO, I went and asked him, I said, "What do you see as the biggest challenges going forward?" And sort of the front Eric had said, he said, "We have a real lack of the younger generation participating." And, you know, the millennials and the X-generation, they're just not interested in, in general, in participating on the various committees. So I guess my question is, how do you go about, if you believe in what Tony said, how do you go about getting the younger generation to participate on some of these committees, particularly since the selectmen, at least in Concord, make selections for the Finance Committee and so forth? Maybe I can comment on that.
I believe the moderators actually appoint the Finance Committee. Oh, yeah, okay.
I think there's some very easy answers. One is, we just need to get them to spend less time with their families and spend less time at their jobs and spend more time and less time watching ballgames. And my point is that I know my kids and many others that I know, they are really stretched and pressed in a way that even though we were very busy growing up and the demands of our jobs were not insignificant, they're on 24/7 with their jobs, their smartphones and their laptops and everything. And it's very, very hard for a lot of them to come up for air, even for relaxation for themselves, you know, let alone really taking time to study and be involved in-depth in things. That said, I'd echo what Ned said earlier and others. Organizations like the League that do engage citizens, I think, can be enormously helpful in reaching out to kids and younger people that you know through church or through grandkids and PTA, things of that nature, to get people involved at a younger age, because it is, it's not only demanding, it really is satisfying and important. I think the people in this room know and understand that. And if the, if more people from the younger generation could become part of this earlier, I think that they would come to understand that. But it is a real challenge, given the lives they lead.
Carmen? So picking that up, I have long thought that involving the PTGs and the high school students, especially those who turn 18 while they're still in school, could be a really big boost to participation in town meeting. I've found it really heartening on the couple of articles that we have had that turned out to be of interest to a club or a science class in the high school, and then we've had those kids show up at town meeting, and then their parents come too, and they carefully work out what they're going to say, they figure out how to get permission to talk if they aren't old enough to vote yet and so forth. And it's just a, you know, a really life-affirming thing to watch them get up and participate in that way. So I really do think that on a very practical level, it's all true, they're all busy, it's all true, but there's a, probably the worst time is when you've got the toddlers at home and you're working full-time. But, you know, by the time they get to high school and the kids are interested too, that's a place where you really can plant that seed for community involvement in the teenagers and also get the parents to be brought in too. So the League could, you could hold your forums at a school, and I know they charge you money, which is ridiculous, but they, you could hold your forums at a school and put the notice in the PTG newsletter, and maybe you'd get more of them to show up. But I think that's the place where we can find people in town.
Thank you for that advice, and we are trying to reach out this year and next year to a set of civic education programs that will engage high school and even middle school students. Judy.
Closer to the microphone, please.
Okay, closer. Do you introduce myself and say my address?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm Judy Zonbergren. I'm the Vote Service Chair for the League and also Vice President, and I live on Border Road. What I observed, when there've been, in terms of the younger population, sometimes a lot of them show up.
Yeah, it's not working somehow. We can't.
It's not?
People can't hear you. I don't know. Let's see. Judy?
Will close?
There you go.
Right there, that's the perfect spot. There we go.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. New technology. What I observed is that when it's something that the younger population, like a school budget, sees impacts them, they show up in droves, then they leave. So perhaps one of the questions that we should ask ourselves, how do we take all the other articles, which will very likely impact everybody in town, and find ways that they can understand how it's relevant to their lives, to get the same engagement that comes when they vote on a potentially contentious school budget? So just perhaps a different way of looking at it. I know everybody's busy, but there's always, what are your priorities in life and what's been going on in the town that I really maybe should be paying more attention to? So just a thought, and if there's any thoughts about how to go about doing that.
I think that's a great observation. I don't have any silver bullet answers for that. I think part of what's going on are much larger cultural forces that we can't really affect at the local level. You know, some of you may have been watching Ken Burns' Vietnam documentary. Well, you know, unfortunately, one of the legacies of Vietnam that we live with to this day is this distrust of government. There's always been skepticism of government that is woven into the American genetic makeup for some very good reasons, but still, whatever bonds of trust and belief in the efficacy and potential of government was pretty well shattered in the Vietnam era and, to my mind, hasn't recovered substantially since then. And I think that's a significant challenge. I hope that we're not, as a society, like alcoholics who are about to hit bottom in our public life at the national level, though I have to say, reading the newspaper every day or listening to the news, I sometimes get that feeling personally. But it does, you know, ironically, it does give me hope. I think more and more people are starting to understand that if they don't engage in government, we really don't have anyone else but ourselves to blame. And when they look around and say, okay, so where can I make a difference, it's pretty daunting to figure out, how can I make a difference on national-level issues? But maybe I can get started at the local level, being on the school board, looking at the town budget or what have you. And so my little bit of optimism on the cultural front is to hope that actually the younger generation will look at the turmoil that we're going through in our public life these days and perhaps have that impact in subtle ways, how they think about local engagement.
Thank you.
Just wanted to check. Paul Horowitz, 173 Hayward Mill Road in Concord.
Mr. Hayward.
I realize this isn't a town meeting, but I just get into that mode. I'd like to approach this technology issue from a slightly different perspective and perhaps from a more gradualist perspective. Because this is a meeting about town meeting, we have focused on the issue of how can technology affect town meeting, and in particular, whether voting should be allowed, and if that good, better, indifferent, and it is a complicated issue. But we had to get off the dime to some extent and begin to discuss these things, and I want to suggest a very specific thing that I think both Concord and Carlisle could adopt without a great deal of difficulty, either expense or, for that matter, political difficulty, that might lead us in the direction of trying to figure out how we can, in Eric's phrase, adapt to the notion that people today are dealing with laptops and iPads and smartphones. Why don't the towns provide two things? One, a little bit of technology, namely an app of some sort, and we could decide what that ought to look like, but I mean, I'll go into that for the moment, but more importantly, an account. So everybody in town has an account, with a password and a certain amount of storage and whatever. Wouldn't cost a tremendous amount. The reason for the account is that now we can do things that don't involve voting where it counts, because as you point out, Wayne, that might require state approval, and it opens up a Pandora's can of worms, as a colleague of mine used to say. But what about non-binding, opinion kind of votes? For example, how do people feel about voting at town meeting? How do people feel about lots of other issues? Okay, there are any number of issues that come up. Plastic bottles were a big issue a few years ago, but there are many others. These would not be necessarily binding votes. In fact, they wouldn't have to be binding votes, but the point would be, I could get to your point, Wayne, to the extent that people, you don't just vote on a particular day, you could vote any time during the month of August, let's say. If you vote twice, the second vote counts, because it's an account after all, you're overriding your first vote, you change your mind, it's okay. You don't want to vote, you don't vote, that's okay. But many more people would vote, you could just sit down with your phone and vote. Many more people would, if there was an important vote, as these things would be, many more people would discuss these things. Never mind how they vote, but they would discuss it with each other. And by the way, the same app that's providing them with some kind of service can also provide them with a forum in which they can write stuff if you want to. That would require a little more, that would have to be moderated, and there's all sorts of questions. But it opens up possibilities with very little initial risk. So I would suggest that that might be something that the various boards of selectmen, select boards ought to be thinking about.
Thank you, Paul, for that question. And of course, how's your Twitter account? I mean, in many ways, you know, Twitter is providing those, I don't have one, but I probably should. And Tom McKean knows something about the importance, maybe, of getting us going in that, in that kind of discourse, actually. Any response?
I think that's a great, great idea. And all I can say personally is I'm working now with other moderators in the state, and we're looking at things like that to try to see what might be possible and also to consider if there might be some ways to facilitate that. One of the big challenges is that for most towns, town meeting is a once-a-year thing, even if it runs multiple nights, and maybe, you know, you have a special town meeting once every three years, something like that. And so setting the, both the hard financial costs and soft costs in terms of volunteer time and so forth, getting these things set up and run can turn out to be quite a heavy lift. But it seems to me that if you come up with an idea like that, that could be appealing to multiple towns, then suddenly you might have some opportunity for sharing resources and having a common development platform and so forth that could actually make it much more affordable. So I would hope that we see something like that within the next couple of years.
Janet, you have a question, I think? Laurie, I think Janet is first, but right behind you. That's okay. And we have time for these last two questions, actually.
Hi. I often find hearings on, what's that? I often find hearings on complex issues are too perfunctory. A single hearing covers many articles, yet some issues are very complex and they're dealt with in many different committees. And also, by the time the hearing happens, the, many of the options are closed. And so it's, certainly by the time it comes to town meeting, it's just an up or down vote. So I've often thought that it would be a good idea to have a workshop or forum or some opportunity, probably in the fall, to discuss complex issues where you could get all the different committees involved, you know, they could do a presentation or something, and people could ask questions until they're done asking questions. I remember at Junction, when we were talking about Junction Village last spring, I don't think we were done speaking about it. I had a question, but we had to go on because there were so many other articles to cover. And I remember with buses, by the time they decided that they had perched the bus depot over... over Goose Pond, it was sort of not maybe the greatest or most likely to succeed option. And if people had had a chance to speak about it in depth in the fall, they might have said, "Could we put it here? Could we put it there?" And, you know, vetted more possibilities. So...
Thank you, Janet. Any response? Carmen, do you have a?
Well, you know, I think that the more complex the issues, the more of a, of a trail they've had through other committees in town. And it is very difficult, I think, when you pick them up, by the time they've gotten to town meeting, it's already been six, nine months, two years, three years, that something has been turned upside down and backwards and been through various committee hearings. That's a really tough one, figuring out how to communicate to people the things that they might really want to pay attention to long before they get to town meeting. Junction Village is one that, for example, it attracted a lot of attention from people immediately around the project, but probably not for the, from the rest of the town until the time that it was ready to go to, to town meeting. And that might have been one that people would have liked to have participated in in terms of the dialogue much earlier on. I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but it's certainly a question worth asking and, and worth thinking about.
And our last question, Laurie?
Hi, Laurie Gilbizaras, 1376 Old Malboro Road. I think I got that up. Okay, it's getting late and tired and whatever. First of all, I want to let you know that I, I think you all wear halos for the enormity of the position, as is the enormity of positions of many of our representatives and town elected officials. And that I look at you, as well as others, as being kind of the guardians of our democracy, which we're seeing eroding very quickly at a national level. And so I see the town government as being critical in preserving what all of us have come to love and know. And I can think of no better method of bringing democracy home to a community than the town government, form of government. As Wayne pointed out, just consider the option of having a committee or a mayor or whatever that would really, you know, be even more difficult to communicate with. So regardless of the amount of work that we all have to go through and try and understand the issues and showing up at the critical times to pay attention, it is well worth it. I think the discussion about where we have to go with the process to make it better, I would say that we all should be thinking in terms of continuous improvement of, across many different issues and whatever. And certainly the town meeting is a primary for continuous improvement. Unfortunately, and I'm not an expert in law or whatever, but it seems that sometimes our laws lock us into procedures that are just very difficult to change. For instance, the law that says that you can't have remote voting at town meeting. And certainly something to consider and work toward because we know that we have a community that can't get to town government. And even though we have a sizable group of people who show up each year, it's still, it's not enough. And there are flaws in town government. I will speak from experience and I know Eric was moderator at the time. When we had a, a vote on something and those of us who were in the auditorium meeting that we got to town meeting fairly early, they called the vote and in, in the main auditorium, it looked like we were going to carry the vote. And then the people flooded the cafeteria and gymnasium at the last minute, had not heard the debate, and voted against it based on some prior communications that may or may not have been appropriate. So I think there's room to improve the whole system and I would, you know, just say congratulations and thank you for your work and let's get out there and foster this, this spirit of continuous improvement that we really all need to participate in to be active citizens for our communities and our country. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wayne, do you want to say?
Just to react, react to that and perhaps tie together some of the themes we've been, been talking about tonight. You know, I couldn't agree more that the, what's needed for people to influence the process, because I think your comments started out, okay, you know, how can people affect things, you know, better? And what you need to do at the town level, if you're really interested in affecting an issue, is not too dissimilar to what you need to do if you're operating at a national level. I've, I've had the, the privilege or burden of being involved in very local things, in, in things happening in state legislate, a variety of state legislatures around the country and, and in Congress. And fundamentally, at, you know, if you really want to get something done, you figure out what the issue is ahead of other people. You start talking to people who are, who may, you have to figure out what the decision process is to get done what you want to have done. You need to go talk to some of the influencers and decision-makers. You need to start framing how they understand the issue. And then you try to formulate something that you think will have some political viability and suggest that to them and figure out how you get that formalized into a, whatever form you need, whether it's a regulation or a law passed or what have you. And then there are various formal processes that proceed from there and you have to organize political support and neutralize your opponents and all of that. Well, to Carmen's example about the high school kids coming in, if they can learn that in high school, they've got incredible careers lying ahead of them, whether they're dealing with legislative and public policy things or they're dealing with some other big bureaucracy in their life, whether it's a customer, an employer or what have you. We're, we're a society filled with large bureaucratic institutions. And if you can figure out how to use those, influence those institutions to get done what you want to get done, you can be successful in all different dimensions of, of life. And I think there is a real opportunity for people to learn that by engaging right here locally.
Thank you so much. In fact, that is exactly it, isn't it? It's that, it's that learned local engagement that becomes a habit for life and, and then gets pursued, you know, forward. We will have three forums, the League will have three forums later in the year in Concord, in a consortium of, of alliance with town government, the town library and the League, in which we will study how the warrant is formed, review the best way to participate in town hearings. And then in the third one is a very specific study of the 2018 town warrant. So those three forums are coming up and I hope you will watch for them and look for them. And we will be advertising them in various ways. I want to thank you for joining us this evening. Please remember to renew your League membership this evening before you go or join, if you have not before, in our spirited organization to help us make democracy thrive. I cannot thank enough these four people for their time, their thoughtfulness and their contributions. Thank you so much.[1794.72]
[applause]